Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board Monday, October 2nd, 2023, Wake Court Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. Broadcast live on local cable channel 8, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website. And we'd like to convene the meeting today. It's at 6:30 in open session and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and a tribe, and in this law, for the living and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right. Minutes.
We don't have any today, John.
Nothing, too quick.
Yes.
Appointments and hearings. Department of Public Works Director Catherine Loret. Looks like the start of our meeting is now with you every week.
Hopefully not every week. Good evening. As mentioned last week when I was here, I am before you for the award of our annual contract for salt, winter road salt, pretreated salt, and the agricultural byproduct. The recommendation is for bid, the contract be awarded to Eastern Minerals for the road salt, to Morton Salt for the pretreated salt, and to Safe Road Services for the agricultural byproduct.
I see one thing, a decrease, huh?
I know.
We don't see that that often, so.
I think they had a surplus from last winter.
The winter that wasn't, right? Anybody in the board have any questions?
No, thank you for the detailed spreadsheets.
David, anything? Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
As far as, and it would be a motion to approve Eastern Minerals, Morton Salt, and Safe Road Services? Do you want to do all?
Do you need them independently, or can we do them together?
Let's do them together.
As presented?
Okay. Perfect. Any other discussion? Not hearing any? Just going to go left and right.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's kind of weird. Fire Chief John Phelan.
The fire chief's not here, but you should have a memo. And I can attest to the fact that in terms of the town policies and procedures being adhered to, they were. And based on the name before you, we just request certification of the process, not confirmation of the candidate, but certification of the process.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to certify the process of hiring a firefighter EMT paramedic position.
So moved.
Second.
First and second. Discussion. Not hearing any.
I guess the only discussion I had, it sounded like it was a unique circumstance where somebody left and then it wasn't clear if it was posted or not.
It was. He left and now he wants to come back.
Okay, then.
Turns out to be a real good question. Any other discussion? No? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Recreational Director Mary Bradbury. I don't think, and this is for pole plunge? Rodney, is she? I don't think this, I mean, these are all repeats with the, with the exception of, well, pole plunge is constant, right? That's not every year. And then luck of the draw pickleball tournament, I can definitely speak to that. And that's just a, it doesn't cause any police detail or nothing. It's actually going to be a tournament to raise money to benefit the American Red Cross. But there's no services needed, no extraordinary circumstances. It's basically put it out there and there's 40 pickleballers playing a tournament to raise money for Red Cross.
It's, went through the typical review before it reached the board. There were no issues brought to my attention.
Motion to accept and approve special event application for the pole plunge to be held at Adequate Beach Monday, January 1st, 2024, from 10:00 to 11:30.
Okay. As a motion?
We'll do them separately.
Yeah.
Second.
All right. First and second, any discussion?
The only thing I have is on the checkbox, I wasn't sure, you know, where it is in the wintertime, should there be medical assistance on standby or anything? Did anybody kind of consider that?
I don't know if they have a detail enough, but we'll check on that, or I should say double check on that.
I have no other issues or concerns.
It's a good point, but I guess, you know, you, it's kind of a shock when you hit that one.
I could say yes.
But I'm thinking you should know that before you go there. But, good point.
So are we approving based on that, or are we approving?
I would just ask that they check, check to see if.
We'll definitely check.
With that caution.
Yeah.
All right. So I have a motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Kind of a motion to support the pickleball tournament. As stated, like I said, there's no specific services and hopefully no medical services needed to be contacted for that one either.
Motion to approve the luck of the draw up pickleball tournament to benefit the Red Cross at Mashpee Pickleball Park.
Second.
All right. First and second, any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
One question, that's not going to have any sound system or anything like that over there.
Nope. Public comments. Drew McManus.
Is there one more special event?
There's another sheet, right?
That follows after that. That's after that.
All right. Public comment.
Thank you. Just a procedural question first because I'm no longer a resident of Mashpee. Does that matter when it comes to public comment? I'm a registered citizen of the town of Rochester. So I don't know procedurally if.
The board can allow a person to speak even though they're a non-resident. We've had them here before.
Yeah, if you're not, it depends, I think if you're speaking as behalf of director, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a no-brainer, right? But if he's speaking as a citizen, we just have to.
Well, just to clarify, I'd be speaking as a president of the Cape Cod Disc Golf Club, so I'm not as a resident and not as director of a department either, so.
Okay. So I think, can I just allow, or do we have to?
I believe it's allowable. It has been allowed by practice. I know that there have been people here in the past who are non-residents who have been allowed to speak. And to my knowledge, the board has not established a policy that says non-residents can't speak. You could do that, I guess, but to my knowledge, that doesn't exist.
I entertain a motion to allow Andrew McManus as the president of the regional, local.
Cape Cod.
Cape Cod Disc Golf Club to speak on behalf of the association.
Robert, second.
First. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Appreciate that. So the reason I'm here is just a brief follow-up and I'll try to be as brief as I can. The reason I'm here is really just kind of a follow-up to the series of events that led to the removal of this article from the town meeting warrant. I'm not here to lobby for it any further. Really just some kind of afterthought comments for your consideration moving forward for articles in general and I guess the, what I consider to be due process when it comes to, you know, review of articles, the steps involved, the work involved, things like that. So, you know, I put in a pretty significant amount of time with the proposal. I thought the proposal was quite detailed and it was revised at least once to address questions from both the Select Board and the Community Preservation Act Committee with additional details. It had a line-out and budget, photos, details of the amount of clearing, basically answers to every question and concern that all boards had since it was first introduced. So when I look back on the procedure that took place, which was started out with me attending various board meetings as required to get, you know, a article to the stage where it can be considered for town meeting. This very Select Board approved the project unanimously or endorsed it, the Community Preservation Act unanimous endorsement, and I believe it was a majority endorsement from the Finance Committee. So when you have all of those to consider and then it comes to a point where at a meeting that I unfortunately wasn't able to attend or didn't think I had to attend, there was a motion to remove the article from the warrant. And then at the following meeting, I had respectfully asked for reconsideration of the motion. Then at the following meeting after that, that motion was made, there was, the motion was asked for, but there were no motion was made. And then on top of that, not allowed to comment on that post-motion or lack of a motion. So I guess, you know, what I want to put to the Select Board moving forward is, you know, what do you consider to be due process for any sort of article for consideration of town meeting warrant? Because I felt that the way that this went down, it didn't meet my definition of due process. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
So communications, correspondence, old business, new business, discussion and approval of the following special events. White Light Nation Meditation and Breakfast, Mashpee Community Park and gazebo, October 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, 2023, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And is there a, Justin Gagny?
Here.
So it's for this, starting October 8th, right? Is it?
The only thing I can say is somebody brought this to our attention, that it was being scheduled without going through the appropriate review and approval process of the board. So there was communication to this person that he needed to come in, and I don't know if you can elaborate.
I spoke to Justin directly. He was unaware that he had to have permission to use that event area before going ahead and scheduling it. Apparently he had showed up on Facebook somewhere that he was going to do this. And when we got word of it, all I did was call Justin and say, Justin, you have to go through the permitting process. And he did. He came in that next day, apologized for not knowing it, and then filled out the application. As far as him coming in, I, I know that our office did call him to tell him he needed to be here, but.
And it appears the application is complete?
Yes, the application is complete.
DPW approved, fired approved, police approved. I don't see any special, nothing special except being in on-site, right?
Yes.
Does anybody?
What does the event entail? Do we have any kind of descriptive?
Well, I really thought that Justin would have been here to explain that because I don't know. I know it's a meditation type where he's just kind of, you know, sitting there with the group and meditating. He doesn't believe there'll be more than 15 or so people there. And then he was just going to have a light breakfast after the meditation.
I have no idea, as a frame of reference, what the White Light Nation is, though.
Oh, I don't either, so.
I have no idea.
That's the only, I mean, and I could see where nowadays that, you know.
We should invite Justin to come in and just take over.
Yeah. October 8th, we're not going to have another meeting. This.
I think what you could do, if you chose to, is approve it on the condition that he has to meet with me and I will address exactly what this consists of or doesn't consist of. And if you trust my judgment, I will make sure that you're duly informed. But it's the only thing we can do at this point because you're not going to meet again. But I would say, if he's not going to come in to at least sit down with staff, that it not be approved.
I mean, I personally would be okay with that. I mean, but the question has to be asked, to your point, Dave, what is White Light Nation? I mean, that sounds.
No idea.
It could be a spiritual meditation thing and that's, that's it, but.
Motion to approve, motion for conditional approval for this special event of the White Light Nation Meditation and Breakfast to be held at the Mashpee Community Park and gazebo on October 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th, 2023, from 9:30 AM to 12:00 PM, as long as, what's his, what's his name?
Justin.
Justin Gagny?
Yes.
Makes himself available to town manager for clarity and understanding of the White Light Nation purpose and intent.
Perfect.
Subject to the town manager's approval.
Perfect. First and second. Michaela has a second. So any other discussion? Not hearing any. Start it. David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Interview discussions and approval of the following appointments. Community Garden Advisory Committee, Rosalyn Mann.
I do have some info on that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Our office was contacted by Rosalyn Mann, who will be unable to attend the meeting tonight due to a family emergency. Also, Polly, and I don't know how to pronounce her last name, can attend the meeting but may be late due to some responsibilities that she articulated to staff and both the candidates for the Mashpee Community Garden Committee.
So mine, it looks like there's three for the community garden, correct?
Yes.
So is there a Rosalyn Mann, Brian Logan, or Polly Manu? All right, so two of yous are here? So it's Polly and Brian?
Polly, yep.
Okay. You want to, I guess, might bring up one at a time?
Yes.
All right. So Brian's, Brian, you're up first, if you don't mind?
No problem.
Looks like the process was covered, right?
Yes.
If you don't mind, just kind of introduce yourself and.
Oh, sure, yeah. I'm Brian Logan. Live on Cottage Lane. Been resident for the last three years. Before that, lived in Southport as a secondary resident as well, too, but from New Hampshire. Retired the last couple of years. I've been in the garden, had plot there for the last two years. I guess I retired for two years now, so I lay a lot of time on my hands and I'm available to, on the advisory committee for the garden.
Great. Anybody have any questions on Brian? I guess we can, we can handle them one at a time and then.
Motion to accept and approve the recommendation of the Community Garden Advisory Committee on the appointment of Brian Logan, member at lodge, term expires June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All right. First and second. And any discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you.
And thank you for volunteering.
And Polly Manu?
Very good. That's a hard one to pronounce.
I just, I took a guess. So if you don't mind, just quick.
Sure, sure. I have had a home in Mashpee in New Seaberry for, gosh, since 2005. And I have been, had a garden plot with the community garden for two years now. And it's, it's really been something I'm very thankful for. It's a great, a great community asset and I've been particularly thankful for it. I wear the mask tonight because I take care of my mother who's 94 and she has leukemia. So for our family, unfortunately, we still live kind of in the world of 2020. So the, the garden in particular has been just wonderful for me to be able to get outside, do something I love, meet new people, interact with other gardeners. So I've been very appreciative of it throughout the past couple of years. I worked with the advisory board doing some data collection and presentation for them around the volunteer hours and so got to know Ginny. And so when Ginny asked me if I would be willing to join the advisory board, I was more than willing.
That's great. I appreciate that. Any questions on Polly Manu?
Notes. Thorough and complete and thank you.
Yeah.
So motion to approve Polly Manu for the garden advisory committee.
I have a motion. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you as well for your interest. And if we can take up Rosalyn, I can, not able to be here, but again, it looks like the hiring, the appointment process is all been covered with all three of them. So consider an op, a motion to approve Rosalyn Robinson Mann as well.
Based, based on Virginia's recommendation and also Rosalyn's letter and the fact that she has a family emergency.
Yep.
I would certainly motion, I motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. First and second for Rosalyn. And any further discussion?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So if you can see it on TV, congratulations. If you don't mind, passing that on to Rosalyn as well.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all for participating in the.
I appreciate it.
Community garden. And I want to commend the advisory committee for following the new practice. This is the first time that I can remember, right?
And it simplifies.
It, yeah.
It's effective and simple.
It makes it. So thank you all very, very much. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, just, but three in a row for, you know, a one-off is one thing. Additional topics? Anybody?
No. You have one more appointment there, John, in the packet.
Yeah, there was, the last one was the design review committee.
Caroline Review.
Sarlon.
It's in your packet, you just turned it over.
Oh, okay. I just turned it over.
Member at lodge.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Design and Review Committee, Carolyn.
Zarlin.
Zarlin?
Yeah.
I didn't do so well on that one.
That's okay. I just signed it.
You might come it up? You might just given us a quick overview, your interest, that's all.
I've only lived in Mashpee in my house for three years, I bought it five years ago. But I chose Mashpee because it's a small town and I came from Western Massachusetts and, and actually smaller town. Served on boards and whatnot out there. I enjoy it. I feel I can contribute. The Design Review Committee, the, the role that I would hope to play is from the agricultural perspective. I can read the plans. I know the, all the planting materials that have to go in from conservation. I'm, I'm pretty familiar with all that information and I would hope to be able to contribute. I would like to be able to see that the town of Mashpee stay kind of the way it is. I would really like it not to become Yarmouth or Dennis or, not that I don't, you know, nothing wrong with those towns, I love them dearly, but I like the small-town Mashpee. I would hope to be able to contribute. Can't complain if I don't try, right?
Right. No? I appreciate your consideration.
Motion to approve Carolyn Zarlin to the Design Review Committee based on the committee's recommendations.
Second.
All right. First and second. There's another one, you know, process followed, so.
Process followed and a strong resume.
Yep. So.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Yeah. Now, additional topics. Liaison reports.
I do.
Okay.
So my report is as Mashpee's representative to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board. I find it critically important to address misconceptions or any confusion with regard to subsidies to towns for wastewater treatment. As we know, Mashpee benefited from a 25% subsidy for Phase 1 of our wastewater treatment project. That subsidy remains unchanged. It's 25%. There's no reduction to the subsidy. There's none. On June 13th, the management board voted to reduce future subsidies from 25% to 12%. This reduction was approved, made with the understanding that the fund would continue to seek state funding that would allow us to revert to the full 25%. So for 2024 projects, the worst-case scenario is 12% as a subsidy and the best-case scenario is 25%. I just think it's really important to stress that the management board's decision has absolutely nothing to do with previously granted subsidies. Mashpee will continue to benefit from a 25% subsidy for Phase 1 of our wastewater treatment project. And I just wanted to clarify with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Any questions, David, or anything with that?
I think Michaela raises good points and, you know, we should all be working in a unified direction, I think. And so, you know, if there is kind of questionable information, then a, I guess I'd like a point of clarity on that, you know, kind of for how they come to those kind of determinations, if it's inconsistent with kind of the goals and missions that have brought forth additional actions. So I feel they're good points and would like more clarity on it so that we're putting out unified information.
And as I said, I participated in that meeting, so I participated in the decision and I'm, I'm clear on the outcomes.
What are you thinking about? Is there a next step or is there a?
Well, the next, the next step for the management fund?
Yeah.
Okay. The management fund, the executive board is, is working diligently to secure the additional state fundings, to revert to the 25%. But there's been a misconception that by reducing the subsidy to 12%, it would impact any funding from the past. So any of the funding that Mashpee has, when in reality, that funding stays with that 25% subsidy. So the board is still looking, or the executive board is still looking to the state to, again, be able to make. be able to make that 25% subsidy whole again, and hopefully that will happen, and we'll certainly know that, I would think, soon. We'll know it in the spring or before.
Okay. Anything else on, that's, I guess that's liaison on, liaison on water, right? I guess it kind of checks both boxes.
That was liaison and water. Yes, it does.
David, do you have anything else on either liaison or water quality?
I do not at this time.
And I'm good as well.
We have one more thing to add. You saw that video? Do you want to comment on that? From SUE? You said you were impressed with the video, and I didn't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not the, the video, but the, the page, the webpage. Is that what you're talking about with the SUE?
I didn't see it, so I don't.
So the Sewer Commission has put together, well, actually, two members of that, along with Karen Leslie, a great job at updating the website on the SUE website. It's giving you where frequently asked questions. It's giving you the background from 2015, where that came from, on links throughout the webpage. It's up to date with who's on the Sewer Commission and when they're, when they expire. The webpage couldn't be better, and I encourage the rest of our boards to do the same, because that is just an amazing job they did.
Yes. I looked through it today. I agree. It's impressive. It's very, very easy to navigate, and sometimes webpages aren't. So a resident clicks on one place and can find all of the, as Wayne was saying, the frequently asked questions, any information that they're looking for. And there's no rabbit holes. It's, it's well done.
Yeah, and it, and it refers to the, the Health Department, so you can see who does the work to hook up. So if you need someone, it'll give you a list of them.
All the contractors.
All the contractors. It gives you where we are currently, where we're going. Very well done page, and I encourage people to look at it.
Who manages the page? Is it the town managing?
Karen Leslie currently is managing the page with two members of the Sewer Commission, Meredith Harris and Catherine. I can't remember her last name.
Yeah, Kathy Castaneda.
So I, I would encourage them to, to look at it, and, boy, I tell you, if you have a question about the SUE, there it is, right there for you.
Well, that's great, because I, because we're, we are still on water quality updates. So I, I know this is a little bit off track, but if you look at the warrant articles, I hope that people, you know, attend town meeting first of all, but second of all, like, I, I look at it, the, the Finance Committee did not recommend Article One. So I understand, and I can only go by what I perceive to be their understanding on that is their concern for spending money. I, I look at that as, I hope it doesn't give the wrong message to the townspeople that's saying, oh, this must be a bad way to spend money to move forward with the next phase of wastewater. So I just hope at town meeting, people show up and pay attention because they, I don't know if you, where they unanimously, they did not support Article One.
After reconsideration.
Huh?
After reconsideration.
Right.
Yes.
So.
And I would, I just have a couple more things to add, but I'll wait until you're done.
Yeah, so, and it just, that being said, I mean, people that look at the book, you look at it and say, you know, SLUC Board unanimously supports, Finance Committee unanimously does not support, that's, you know, that's a concern. I feel very comfortable with supporting it. And if I'm called out, or any one of us on the board are called out to defend supporting wastewater, I, I think everybody on this board would be very comfortable with doing so. I hope the Finance Committee considers their response, you know, carefully, because, you know, people in the town read that book, and the Finance Committee does a great job, but I, I don't know if it sends a mixed message as far as concern about money, or it's, I, I don't really know. I'd rather than not to take a position at all on the article, rather than say no, I'm not recommending, because for me, it gives me the perception that they're not supporting clean water. I don't know. But it's on the topic of clean water, so.
I mean, on a situation like that, like, I hope each member can kind of defend their position, you know, on something like that, because it is so important, you know, and, you know, if it was reconsidered, I hope, you know, due process was followed and things of that nature that, I don't know, that it's, I, I don't understand why they would be opposed to it to that extent.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
To your point, to take no action would be more favorable than coming out with a definitive no. I don't, I don't understand their logic or what they're trying to achieve with that.
I mean, I know when I, you know, before I was a SLUC man, I read that book, and I looked at Selectman, I looked at Finance Committee, and I, if everyone was in favor or people were, I, I took that into account, because you're, you know, elected officials and such, that I, I just hope that people show up and support, you know, wastewater, and, you know, I don't know what's, you know, the next step down the road, when that will be, but at this point, I, I'm pretty, you know, a big supporter of the next phase, and beyond that, I can't say, but.
I mean, it sends us an alternative message, message that, you know, they're fine with the water the way it is. And that's not the message I think the town wants to be behind or defend, so I hope they're prepared to.
Exactly.
Ma'am. I was, I was at that meeting of the Finance Committee, and there were only four members present, so they were missing the chair and the vice chair at that time. I stayed at the meeting until I, all the voting had been completed to answer questions, and I answered a lot of questions, and I provided a lot of clarification based on, based on facts, based on, on what I know with references. And when I left the committee, thinking the voting was completed, it was a vote of no recommendation. So it wasn't, they took no position.
Right.
So when I left, there was no position taken.
All right, Mr. Collins, sorry for that digression.
I just wanted to add, the town also has prepared two information sheets. I emphasize information sheets. One pertaining to Article One, entitled, "The Wastewater Treatment Design Phase Two." It's a warrant description of Article One. And then also, another information sheet, what we know pertaining to water quality. And it includes the problem, the result, the state mandate to clean our waters, what this means to the town of Mashpee, and its site sources, the cost to residents, and there's additional information that I encourage people to go to. And obviously, I have the utmost respect for the Finance Committee and whatever they choose to do, but I would just remind this board that you folks voted unanimously to support this, as did the Sewer Commission. So it wasn't just a unanimous vote from this board, it was also a unanimous vote from the Sewer Commission. I just would throw that out as a reminder in case anybody forgot. So to get a unanimous vote from the Select Board and the Sewer Commission, I think, is a powerful statement.
Agreed. And just to clarify, utmost respect for the Finance Committee. Difference of opinion, absolutely, but doesn't mean there's any lack of respect there as well. Absolutely.
I want to applaud the Town Manager's Office on the information that's there. That page is informative. It has all of the resources people can go to. So it has statements, factual statements, and then supportive documents. And I think any resident, I think all residents should have, take the opportunity to spend time with it. Thank you for doing that.
And that was Town Attorney approved, just to ensure that it was not any political activity.
All right. You all set?
I'm all set on water quality.
Tom, manage your updates.
Okay, the long-awaited pickleball sound study is in. I have not had an opportunity to read the entire report. I would encourage the board to go to the conclusions and some recommendations, and I think it was very informative. Essentially, they make a recommendation to make some adjustments to the sound barrier that currently exists, and there's also a couple of other recommendations in there. But I think you're going to find the information interesting in that there were some noises at, at night from, I guess, jets at the airbase that were a little more disturbing than anything along these lines. But we'll distribute the report. It would have been in your packet, except we didn't receive it until the agenda was posted. We received it after the agenda was posted, so we figured it would be best to distribute it tonight, and then obviously, it'll be a public document.
But as a summary, basically, it's a, it's not a, it's a take no action, but a recommendation of a couple modifications.
You will see the results for yourself, sir. There are some recommendations in there. I also just want to remind everybody that Monday, October 9th, the offices will be closed. Obviously, town meeting will be taking place on Monday, October 16th, at 7:00 PM. And the Finance Committee, speaking of the Finance Committee, their report in the town meeting warrant was mailed on Friday, September 29th, 2023. I know I received mine in the mail. Road closures and detours for the wastewater project. Route 28 closure, detour Tuesday, October 10th through Friday, October 13th. Route 28 will be closed from Tuesday, the date that I mentioned, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for paving. Eastbound traffic will be detoured onto Quiniquisette Avenue to Orchard. Westbound traffic will be detoured onto Ashes Path to Meeting House. Ashes Path Road closure and detour Monday, September 25th, Friday, or I should say, until Friday, October 6th. Ashes Path between Carlton Drive and Route 28 will be closed from Monday, the 25th, to Friday, the 6th, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for sewer work. Anyone assessing, accessing, I should say, the transfer station during these hours should use Meeting House Road during this same time period. Carlton Drive between Ashes Path and Carlton Drive will be closed. That's kind of tardy information, but I just wanted to put it out there. And I also wanted to make reference to the fact that the Red Brook Road dam removal culvert replacement, the revised proposal for permitting and final design phases is in process. As a reminder, in '23, Horstley Witten completed a feasibility study and a conceptual design for the removal of the Red Brook Road dam, replacement of that dam with a properly sized replacement culvert that would be compliant with the Massachusetts Stream Crossing standards. This current proposal addresses permit and final design phases of the project, and I have more information on that, if you would like. And also, Mass DEP Bureau of Waste Prevention gave us the good news regarding the recycling program that we have received, or I should say, earned a payment of $7,200, thanks to DPW. So I just wanted to make reference to that. And finally, I want to bring to the board's attention, or I should say, to public attention, the types of things that I think are concerning for the town. Obviously, we're all concerned about our wastewater challenges, and we received a complaint regarding a property that's being advertised on a website for a short-term rental. The sentence on the property description reads, and I quote, "Five-bedroom, three-bath cottage that is perfect for a large group." The town's permit says three bedrooms and two baths. The advertisement goes on to say that a jukebox is available. We did some checking. They're not even registered with the town, as they're supposed to be. So we've got several things that we're looking into. One is with the Health Department and the Code Compliance Inspector with Building, and we're also going to be following up with the Police Department relative to the noise complaints that are being focused on this particular dwelling. I think it's worthy to say to the board that these are the kind of things that we have got to be aggressively enforcing, and I consider it my responsibility to ensure that, but I certainly hope that the board completely supports swift and firm action to make sure these people get into compliance with the standards that they are clearly violating when this foolish advertisement goes out without understanding what you're supposed to be compliant with.
You have my support.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Is there any way to find out when they started a short-term rental?
We're, we're checking into that. I received some of this information Friday, additional information today. I had the Assistant Town Manager speak with the complainant, and we're going to continue to follow up. We did go to the house in question, and also, the owner, to our knowledge, lives in California. But just bringing it to your attention.
Thank you.
You have the board's full support of.
Yes.
And look forward to hear any future updates.
And that's all I have for manager updates.
Thank you, sir.
And that last, do we have, for folks that aren't in compliance, are, is there like a fine or fee schedule of that action the board needs to take to?
There's, there's action that can be pursued through the Board of Health. That's one. And then, secondly, any bylaw violation can lead to a citation, and then obviously, whether it be a general bylaw through an enforcement branch or through the PD, if it's a different type of violation, all of those options are on the table when we're dealing with a situation like this. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I wanted to bring it to the public's attention, that if you're doing that, hopefully we catch you, and if we do, we're going to come after you.
Yep.
It's that simple.
Well, with regard to water quality, it's so important that we stay on top of that, so thank you. so thank you. And, and other reasons too, but I'm thinking about the importance of cleaning our waters and making sure that we proceed and thank you for doing that.
Is the location near a water body?
It's within, yes, it's within a reasonable distance. I would say it's close. Somebody else may argue otherwise.
I wouldn't be surprised if you uncover more. All right. Thank you. We don't have anything else if we, anything else missing? If not, go into executive session? Which?
I, I move that the board convene an executive session to discuss the disposition and value of real property, 35 Lake Avenue, Parcel 2820, 409 Main Street, Parcel 3680, 415 Main Street, 2830, 0 Meeting House Road, Parcel 68-13B, and 0 Falmouth Road, Parcel 6814 and 6816 pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, and Chapter 30B, Section 16, the Chair having declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, from which the board will not convene an open session.
Thank you, Michaela.
Give me a second, I need to vote.
Second. First and second.
Yes.
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 Yes.